Scott, are you still working on this? Or?
We are live.
Okay, we're live now. Good afternoon. This is the Thursday, November 19, 2020, the edition of the Athens City Planning Commission. All members are present, so a quorum has been established. Would like to welcome our newest member to the Planning Commission, Mr. John Katuski. And I'm sure most of you in town know John and all the great contributions he's made to the city of Athens, and we look forward to his input and contributions to the City Planning Commission. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm excited to be a part of it.
Terrific. Let's see, we have a disposition of the October 1st, 2020 meeting minutes. If you've had a chance to review, if there's any questions, additions that you'd like to make for Patty. Otherwise, I'll make a motion to accept.
Second?
Second, all in favor? John has to sit this one out, so I'll say aye. So we have all but one member approving the minutes. The cases for today's meeting is the 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and Paul Logue is going to give just a brief synopsis of the plan and followed by discussion. Paul? Good morning, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chairman. Thank you. John, welcome to the City Planning Commission. Thank you for your commitment to six years of service to the city. I don't know if you were aware that it was six when I signed up for it, but...
I was not, but that's okay.
You're stuck with us all now. I think that's under Ohio Revised Code. It's a six-year appointment, so. Well, thank you. And John, like I said, welcome. You're coming in on the tail end of the city's comprehensive planning process. It's been, it's an effort we've been doing for, I think we started in early 2018 or late 2017 with a lot with visioning and some public workshops. And then the planning process, working myself, working with a few interns, we continued doing research and small group discussion and surveys and neighborhood information gathering at a lot of meetings through 2018 and into 2019 where we started drafting a document. We were preparing to bring this forward in early 2020. We had some discussions at the Planning Commission, but then everything got a little, we got postponed based on the pandemic, like so many other things. As we started getting a little bit more adjusted to our current state of affairs during the pandemic, Planning Commission and City Council were interested in continuing to move forward with our comprehensive plan. And so started doing presentations with the Planning Commission in August and into September, and now we're towards the very end here to look for discussions about making a recommendation forward to City Council. John, I'm not sure, I assume you've seen at least a draft or been involved with the comprehensive plan through the process. Just really briefly here, the plan has, we do, we have a vision statement set from March of 2018 that focuses on Athens as being a welcoming and forward-thinking diverse community that grows, continues to be a sustainable community, but also, you know, reflecting our history and our college-town roots. There's several broad community takeaways, and I think that's probably the most important thing to really think about when we're thinking about planning for the city's future. Those broad takeaways that we tried to incorporate into the comprehensive plan include a much-needed understanding that diversification of our local economy is crucial to our survival and our success. It's also a realization that we have very little room to grow outside the existing city limits of Athens. We're kind of pinned in based on our topography and our floodplains, as well as the cost of providing services as we spread out further and how that weighs down our city infrastructure. From the perspective of the community, looking at sustainability issues, there's a lot of demand and interest towards moving away from fossil fuels as our primary source of energy and moving into renewable energy, as well as being more efficient with the use of energy in the city. Also looking, we're looking at our corridors of Athens and how they are going to change over time. And two of our corridors, Union Street and Stimson Avenue, are probably our keys to being gateways into the city, and those are the two, if we're looking for where there's some opportunity for growth and economic development, if we're trying to grow sustainably without growing outside the existing boundaries of our city. Another key takeaway, and I think, and I think this is a really important one that we heard throughout this planning process, is that the need for Athens to be an inclusive community and an equitable community. And as part of that, the conversations were focused on Athens being a place that people want to call home and a place that people feel as if they can call it home because it has the things that they need within their, as a diverse community to make it feel like it's a place where we can all fit in. Also key is our disabilities planning, making sure that we are building a city that works well for everybody, that it's effective to get around, it's safe for people to get around based on all abilities. Also, our housing. The housing needs within the community of Athens, within the city of Athens are not being met very well. We don't have a lot of variety in our housing choices. We have single-family residential units, and then we have multi-unit apartment complexes for students. We don't have a lot of other options for people of all ages, of all price ranges, of all incomes, and so we need to address those in this comprehensive plan. And lastly, I think one of the key things to take away is from the communities that we heard that there's high-quality recreational opportunities within the city are key, as well as high-quality public arts. And so those are also things that we're trying to build into our comprehensive plan, our city plans. So I know you said just about five minutes, RJ, and I think I'm right up on five minutes. And if, John, we do have detailed presentations, and Patty and I can provide links to the previous Planning Commission meetings if you want to see those. They're kind of boring, I won't, I'm not going to deny that, or we can talk offline. But RJ, I think you said you wanted to open it up for discussion, and so unless there's anything else, I'll cede to the Planning Commission.
Perfect. Thank you, Paul. And again, just to echo the mayor's previous comments, congratulations on a terrific job, and we appreciate the work that you and the various community members put into the plan.
Thank you. It was a community effort, there's no doubt about it. And full disclosure, I do want to make sure we give credit, there was several interns that participated in the planning process and really helped out to get it across, across the field. They were, I was really fortunate to have an outstanding group of interns in the last several years.
Thank you. Does anyone have any other questions or comments moving forward?
I have just one, kind of a question, comment. So, so Paul, you talked about the city and the union corridors. Has the comprehensive plan looked hard at the 50-32 corridor coming in because of the work that's happening out there with regard to sewer and that kind of thing? Is, is that included, has that been included within the, the planning discussions?
Yes, it has been. We, we made sure that the, we got a lot of feedback from our City Engineering and Public Works Department to make sure that, you know, that we've got sufficient infrastructure and made sure that the needs for lift stations and pumps and all those things are incorporated and make sure that we've got capacity to handle sewer. We also, just kind of as a sidebar, when we were working with the county to get a development agreement or an infrastructure agreement so that the sewer project could occur, one of the real concerns that the city had was making sure that that sewer project is focused on a public health issue first, making sure that we address sewer issues and septic issues that exist out in that area. And also because there's no zoning and there's no planning for those portions of Athens township, we didn't want to shoot ourselves in the foot where we were creating a corridor that was outside the city limits, that's ripe for economic, ripe for economic development, which could actually incentivize existing businesses and enterprises in the city to move outside the city to avoid payment of income taxes, as a primary example. So we only allowed for a minimal amount of economic development to occur in that corridor with a caveat that we can allow for additional economic development in separate arrangements with the city to make sure that there's a capture of benefits to the city so that we're minimizing our risk. Does that make sense?
Does. Okay, thank you.
Paul, going forward, a couple of things that I wanted to ask about the conditional permit accessory for dwelling units.
Yeah.
And in the age of virus and the possibility of virus down the road, my concern has been about density in population, just being able to get out and breathe, you know, maybe additional balcony space in future so that people, if they're confined a house to their apartment, whatever, that, you know, they do have some space so they don't go insane with this thing. Can you, again, just talk a little bit about, do you feel as though the garage conversion, for instance, or accessory structure regarding like your land use of 60-40? Does this idea infringe on that?
I'm not, I'm not sure about the question of whether it infringes. What I, what I can say is the recommendation for allowance of accessory structures, I think, I think the need for that still holds for multiple reasons that we heard through the planning process, one of which is to, if people should choose to, is to give them an opportunity to remain in their homes longer by, by collecting some, having a revenue stream coming in so that they can maintain their property, they can retrofit it for aging-in-place and things of those, things along those lines. It's also really important, I think, if we're looking at it from a family who may have an adult with a disability, who wants some independence, but also wants to be close to caregivers and families so that they, from that perspective. As it relates to the pandemic specifically, I think, you know, as long as, I think there's the, the health recommendations, both at the federal, state, and local level, I think as long as we're all following those rules, we are, we are minimizing our risk of exposure. I'm not a health, you know, public health professional, though. That being said, I think as, you know, if we're, if we're concerned about those changes especially under times of pandemic, we can look and say, you know, how can we make these things happen? Maybe, maybe it's a little bit tightening on that. Those are recommendations that the Planning Commission would be reviewing at some point if we're moving forward with it, RJ, before it goes to City Council. So I think there's a lot of opportunity to investigate, discuss timing, and whether we do need to be looking at public health issues. And I think we'll be doing a lot more of that, just in general, discussing public health as it relates to our public spaces, our streets, our sidewalks, our parks, et cetera, to make sure that what we're, we're designing things that, that are safe places for us to be in public.
With that, also revisiting parking then, correct? With R1, if you made those type of changes?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're, yeah, definitely.
Talking more about maybe the possibility of stack parking?
Yeah, like, yeah. And as you're aware, and just so John's aware as well, which in case, I assume he is, but, you know, adopting a comprehensive plan does not mean that laws are changing, of course. In some states, you have to have, your laws need to be, your zoning regulations and those schemes, they all need to be in accordance with your comprehensive plan at the time that it's adopted. In Ohio, it's not. Ohio, I kind of, I actually look at our comprehensive plan and even our past comprehensive plan, it's almost like it's a menu and saying, you know, here's, these are, this is what we want to achieve, this is the community we want to build, these are strategies that might get us there. And so, you know, what are the prime, what are the primary strategies? What are the strategies that will work based on current politics, based on the goals of City Council, the goals of a mayor, the goals of a City Planning Commission? So we have, there's a lot of flexibility with what we move forward with and when we move forward with it, of course. There are things that can be intractable, that over time are no longer intractable. And so as, you know, as we change as a community and as we learn more, then some, some issues might be more salient in five years than they are going to be in a year.
Right. When you talk about give design flexibility for accessible design and universal design, not so much the interior aspects of the design, but in terms of exterior, what people within the community see, does too much flexibility get away from, say, a cohesive look in the community? As far as, a lot of people like the whole brick aspect. They react a little bit when something's done in plaster or something that's really not in the kind of colonial-type state that a lot of people, or a lot of the design is in. Is that a concern to you as far as like going forward? What, what would your thoughts be in terms of how much flexibility you're offering?
Well, with, with design standards specifically, as a general rule, in fact, the only, the only area of Athens, somewhere in our district, we have design standards, the Uptown District and a few one-off buildings in Athens. But we've always been silent on the materials that we use for homes. And, and for, you know, a commercial project out on East State Street, we've never said, we've never had an expectation for how like a uniform image or something of our community. I'm not saying that that's not a bad idea, but I will say that there wasn't, the planning process, there wasn't consensus on that issue with the, with the exception of historic areas of the community. I do think, you know, you're, you're right, there, in a worst-case scenario, it could create a little bit of, it could take away from the uniformity, uniformity of our community. My, my expectation would be that there wouldn't be a lot of it to start with, but really, if we're looking at, you know, design flexibility there, it's a really like a little bit more about, you know, setback waivers if somebody needs to build accessibility features into a home, or something along those lines.
Okay.
And I would, in my opinion, the priority should be towards making sure that a person can adequately and safely live in the city of Athens as a primary responsibility, as opposed to the aesthetics of it.
When you talk about reducing minimum lot size in new subdivision, what is the administration's thought on that going forward and why? What, why are they talking about?
Well, I won't speak for the administration as a whole. I, I'll speak for, on, on my opinion on that. The reality is that our subdivision regulations are built for traditional suburban cul-de-sac style, larger lots, larger homes, a lot of separation. And so if somebody wanted to build something, if they wanted to build housing options that are on smaller lots, smaller homes with more open space, shared parks and things along those lines, if they wanted to build townhouses and condominiums, a lot of those things we really, we don't easily allow to happen. And so it doesn't happen because if the process means, well, you got to go get a variance, and then you got to get out, pass the City Council to approve it, and you need to provide, you need to invest, you know, $20,000 for site plans prior to getting an approval, it turns people off from, from looking to do those housing styles in our community. And so looking at the lot sizes and trying to build lot sizes where we can put, put more housing in, provide more flexibility to developers, and then at the same time, when we're adding more housing and providing more flexibility, we need to think about on a per-linear foot, how much does it cost us to serve those subdivisions? What does it cost to plow the streets and, and to provide sewer and to maintain that sewer and to maintain that gutter and to provide those and maintain those water lines? And if we're, we're only maintaining for, if we can get, developer says, well, I can put 30 lots in as opposed to what our current code would allow for eight, then we have an opportunity to recoup and maintain that infrastructure over time so that it's not a burden on the rest of the city to maintain everybody else's infrastructure.
Let me add to that, if I may, and that is, RJ, to your question, the other piece of this, and Paul was kind of touching on it a little bit, is, you know, the, the, the issues that have come forward with the Affordable Housing Commission, you know, is pretty loud and clear, is that lot size, you know, dictates cost of that home to some degree, and it kind of is counterintuitive to creating housing that where we're, we are really at a deficit is in the 125, 150 to 250 range, you know? And I look at some existing PUDs that are not developed, and they're not developed for a multitude of reasons, and even if they were, those lots, which are substantial, Oakmont Four is a great example, to where those would be in the $300,000 price range or higher, potentially. And to have smaller lots makes for more affordable housing that starter, you know, individuals, young professionals, people who want to retire in place and are downsizing, this fits really well with that whole affordable housing mission, which is a component within the comprehensive plan.
Right. So going with that mission, if we just talked about it on a national level, then something like University Estates is not something that you would want to see going forth in the future?
Well, I think, I mean, it could certainly go forward. That would really be dependent upon the developer. If a developer feels that the market is there to develop $400,000 homes plus, if the market's there, then that will be the market. But I would contend that where the real market is at this point in time is in that 150 to 250 range, and those are few and far between at this point. I would suspect that we would be engaging with a lot more developers in that, that price range and development range, but again, to have a developable land that are smaller parcels than what exists right now, and as you're well aware, the parcels that exist up at University Estates under that existing PUD are large parcels, and there's development going on there. But it's, again, where we're at a deficit is in that lower price range. So the market's going to drive that, RJ.
And RJ, just to kind of double-check on, if you recall, several years ago, we, we did an analysis of our, the, our existing subdivision regulations and looked at lots throughout the entire city of Athens. And for example, the, the historic, you know, the, the west side of Athens, it's been the west side of Athens for over 100 years, almost every lot on the west side of Athens is non-conforming based upon our current subdivision regulations. With the exception of the, the south side of Athens, most of the cities, we can't, we can't build the city that we have today based on our subdivision regulations. If a developer came in and said, I want to make something that looks like the west side of Athens, Second Street, Schaefer Street, Miller, all those streets, they would have to get a variance for every lot that they wanted to build. In order to do that, our subdivision regulations would not allow for a neighborhood to be built like that. Because again, it's focused on a suburban style of housing as opposed to building a community style or a city style of housing. And there's a lot of, you know, there's been a lot of new, new communities that have been built over the last 20, 30 years throughout the United States that have a more, they call it typically the new urbanism style. We can't even build that in Athens because of our subdivision regulations. So allowing for small lots and encouraging smaller lots to go to, to actually get us development that looks like our city.
Is increase in population something we're looking for necessarily?
I would think we're, at this point, we're trying to maintain our population based on current, you know, current trends with university. But I think, I don't think we want to shut the door to growth, period. I grew up in Youngstown, Ohio, and, and you know, that city was, went from 135,000 people, right now it's down to 65,000 people. I can tell you as a city planner, that is not a situation we want to have in a city where we are shrinking. We want to maintain or grow, but, but shrinking is a, is a doomsday scenario for city finances and what you can do because...
Yeah, and I agree with you on that. The other thing I'm wondering about, though, is if in fact that's Athens' future, do we need to be having smaller lots and moving in that, where we're basically reducing what somebody could build in Athens? If you wanted to have a 350 or a $500,000 house and you can afford it, is that ability still there, or are we talking about really restructuring the city in such a way that things do become smaller? But not as, but with not the variety or the diversity that people might want in a community?
I think, I think those subdivision, the recommendation to reduce the lots is really to allow for, for lower price points at 350 to $500,000. I'm, I'm pretty confident that if somebody wants to build homes at those price points, they can do that today, and they're going to be able to do that in the future. There's, there's already, we are, we have lots sitting there ready to go at those price points today.
Right.
I would agree with, with Paul's comment. I mean, they, they, I don't, I don't think that this is stating that, that future development of homes have to be smaller homes. It's just, this is freeing things up for there to be smaller homes if someone chooses. And if a developer chooses, because the market will bear to build more smaller dwellings.
Does anybody else have any other questions? Nancy or?
My hand's up. Yeah, my hand is up.
Okay. Nancy, go ahead.
Okay. I wanted to echo what you were saying earlier, but first let me note that University Estates, at least in the early phases, had several, people bought lots on either side of them, so it's not really built out, but I don't think it's ever going to get built out because it was built with very small lots, and they had big houses on them, and then they have next-door neighbor is themselves. All right. The other thing I wanted to say is I hope if you continue, if you do this in our zoning structure, if you put a second structure on a, on a lot, and it's, it's there forever, even if the person is senior like I am and may not be here in 10 years, I mean, what, the variance is forever. I mean, not the variance, but the, the second structure on the lot. And I'm a little concerned about that, especially after a year ago's experience when, and I'm only speaking for other, for the citizens, not for myself so much, but what, what happens is that if you build a building in the garage, then, then it's there forever, even if it was to help, to house your son who has CP or something else. And it's a problem, I think, for some neighborhoods, and I do hope that we build in notification, substantial notification to the people in the neighborhood, so we don't have a repeat of what we had last time with the, with the VRBOs or whatever their equivalent is. You know, I think that both RJ and I and I, and the other, and Christie and the people that went to that, to the meeting were astonished that there was such a proposal going on. And I think that there's the individual's rights and then the larger rights of the neighborhood. Okay, amen.
Noted, Nancy.
I'm done. Yeah. I mean, I just, didn't you think the RBO was a little bit, I mean, we were, we were broadsided by people who were totally unaware of what was going on. And I think it was not the best thing. I hope that if council decides to go forward with this, they make it well-known that they're going to follow certain rules. Okay, second amen.
Let's see. Oh, I'm sorry, Nancy, did I cut you off?
Let me just talk a little bit about sidewalks and streets because, once again, neighborhood Let me just talk a little bit about sidewalks and streets, because, once again, neighborhood issues. My neighborhood has been inundated by people taking shortcuts, and it's okay because they pay for the street too. I don't mind that, but what I do mind is that sidewalks aren't on sides of the street and maybe can't be built. And don't tell me you want to narrow, Paul, don't tell me you want to narrow Madison because I think it won't work. It's very narrow right now and it's a major artery. I think that steep streets, even if we can't meet the four-foot sidewalk requirement, probably not realistic, why don't we consider someplace where pedestrians can get off the street if a car is barreling down on them? I talked to a couple people going down the hill, I mean, when there wasn't someone behind me, or coming up the hill, and I was concerned that there's not enough room for the sidewalk. Well, it seems to me that if we're going to be a mobile city and we're going to have all of these people walking, they're going to have some trouble on getting down the hill. That's all there is to it. And so I'd like to see, I mean, bicycles have a better shot at safety, but the pedestrians are not safe often, on Madison especially. Now, I hate to be talking about a specific neighborhood issue, but I think it's true in other cases too, there just aren't places for people to walk, and the people now are very active, maybe it's just the pandemic, who knows, but they're out trying to get around, enjoy the scenery, and be safe. So if we could, I know, not follow the exact guidelines, but keep a place for people to get off the road without trespassing would be good. Another amen.
I'll give you an amen on that too, Nancy, I agree.
Okay, so do it.
We're trying, Nancy, we are always trying to make it more safe for pedestrians and bicyclists and try to minimize the risk.
Allow the people to use, I'm sorry, Paul, allow the people to use the street too, or adjacent to the street. I mean, I've seen the school bus stop, it's gorgeous sometimes in the olden days, a bunch of kids, and then you see somebody mindlessly driving along, texting, and it's awful because the kids don't have any place to stand. I don't have kids, but I have grandkids and I can just see them scattered, splattered all over the road because it's Joneswood, very dangerous street. I tell them to walk behind the hedge in front of my house, please. Anyway, that's my safety concern. I don't know who enforces safety exactly, maybe Captain Pyle, I don't know.
Thank you, Nancy, anything else on that? Chief Pyle, do you have any comments in general about the planning or anything in specifics?
I don't, sir.
Okay, great. Mr. Katuski, is there anything else that you'd like to follow up with?
Oh, I, the only thing I will do is I will reinforce what Nancy was saying about safety and others, about safety of pedestrians and bicyclists and, you know, people with alternative ways of getting around. And I agree, you know, with her on Madison, you know, I see people walking their dogs on Joneswood, it's very dangerous there. We really need to find ways to be able to allow people to move off the streets when necessary, so.
Just along those lines, so your additional comment about that, over the summer and into the fall, I spent a lot of time working with a few members of the city's disabilities commission to better understand their experiences getting around Athens. And for, I think, most of us on this call, we are, I think at this point in our lives, we are, I think we're an able-bodied group of people. It is incredibly eye-opening and revealing to walk around Uptown Athens with somebody who requires a wheelchair or a mobility device to get around. And the little things that none of us might, whatever, even cross our minds as being a legitimate health and safety hazard, that they can experience, you know, just sometimes it's a crack in a sidewalk or a rough patch or uneven curb, there's so many of those little things all over our community that a lot of, we don't even acknowledge, but that they experience every day, and it discourages them from being, you know, more active members of our community. So we're working on a lot of that too. I just had a, just had disabilities meeting last night, and we gave, myself and Noah Tremblay from the Disabilities Commission, we gave a presentation about some of the things that we experienced, and so we're trying to address those issues too. It is, making this city safer for everybody is a, you know, is probably the biggest goal we have, it's, you know, it's under our police powers of health, safety, and welfare, and we're constantly trying to make those improvements. I can say on, you know, my perspective, change doesn't happen as fast as we want it to happen. And I'm sure Mayor Patterson and Chief Pyle can say the same thing, we all want to make those, if we could make those changes today, it would be done, right?
Thank you, Paul.
We are working to make those changes.
All the time, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, do you have any other comments that you'd like to make?
I do not.
Okay. Let's see, well, at this point, would someone like to make a motion regarding comprehensive plan?
I would like to make a motion to adopt the comprehensive plan and send it on to city council.
Second.
There's a second, okay.
Second.
All right, Nancy has seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 And those opposed? And I'll have an abstention. Moving on to communications, I'm sorry, yes, there are no communications, report from the city planner, Mr. Logue.
Very briefly, I already mentioned the work we're doing with the city's disabilities commission, that's been a really great exercise. Also continuing on the Mount Zion project, the certified local government grant that the city received for that, we should have that report wrapped up by the end of this year. And there, these, the Athens County Age Friendly, Athens Planning Process is continuing, is ongoing. If any members of this commission are interested in joining us, I think, I know Mayor Patterson's already involved as well as myself, if anybody's interested in getting involved with Athens County Age Friendly planning over the next couple of years, please feel free to reach out to me. I'm happy to loop you in. That's all I have, RJ, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Mr. Riggs?
Good afternoon, RJ, I don't have anything to report this afternoon.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Logue or Mr. Riggs? Okay, thank you. Opportunity for citizens to speak on items not covered on the agenda. Patty, is there anyone who is on the line here?
Not that I can see, Scott?
Scott?
No, there's no attendees.
Okay, thank you.
All right, couldn't get unmuted, there's nobody there.
Okay, thank you. Announcements, another business.
Yeah, the only announcement is just a reminder to everybody, the governor's order, he has implemented a curfew of 10:00 PM to 5:00 AM, so know that that's out there. The other thing, it's just a reminder to everybody, please wear a mask, social distance, wash your hands frequently, you know, it's, this is in our hands, literally, this is in our hands to sit there and protect each other, so I want to continue to be that squeaky wheel to make sure everyone is doing the best that we possibly can to make our community as safe as we possibly can. But again, it's up to each and every one of us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next meeting will be December 3, 2020, and with the business of the Athens City Plan-